Well, the first one's not gonna be there. The prices, nobody's coming. I didn't figure they would. And they really, I mean, they don't have to.
Okay, let's start this meeting. Call the order, or meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Will the clerk please take attendance?
Mayor, Councilmember Bacon is absent this evening. Everybody else is present.
All right, thank you. Entertaining motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Oh, city clerk, please call the roll.
Avery.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Okay, item 5E, open forum. If there's any member of the public who wish to address the council on an item not listed on tonight's agenda, seeing none, we'll move on. Item five, COVID-19 update. City manager Paul will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. Brookings is starting to see an increase in COVID cases and we're now suppressed to the categories as high for our county. Our staff and local partners have worked to bring the public and council an update tonight regarding state and local COVID implications. With us tonight on the phone, we have Tim Heath from the Department of Health, Bonnie Specker, Patrick from Avera. I believe Amy is from Stanford with us as well, as well as Daniel Scholl. No one from the school system could attend tonight's meeting. I know Tim only has a few moments to speak with council and Patrick as well, so we'll go ahead and start with Patrick, if that's okay, and if Patrick's on the phone. I do believe he has a presentation to give as well. So Patrick, whenever you're ready, go ahead. Oh, wait just a minute. I guess I can probably just talk a little bit to this, just let council know. Late last week, we were informed that the state is now giving us daily numbers across the state, so a lot of our community partners are looking at those numbers. We did have our monthly call with our partners, and that includes everyone that I mentioned here, as well as the hospital and the school system earlier this week to get an indication where everyone sits. Right now, the school system is looking at a no mask policy, but a recommendation. I know that they're constantly looking at that. They're getting a lot of calls from the public, as well as teachers and other staff professionals. I do know that with the hospital, they have, I believe, three individuals that are currently hospitalized with COVID. One was sent to outside of Brookings here most recently. I was also informed that things are looking a little bit different compared to last year. Right now, we are continuing a lot of elective surgeries. Last year during COVID, we stopped that, and therefore, we had a resource of doctors and nurses to tap into should we see a surge. So that will have to be considered as we continue to move forward. With the university coming on board, and we also have Daniel Scholl who could speak a little bit further to it, we do not have an indication of how many students that'll be here within the next couple of weeks have been vaccinated. We do have some numbers given to us at a state level that give us that cohort between 18 and 25 years of age, which is very low number. With that, let's see if Bonnie has any update on our presenters for tonight.
Paul, could I ask an unrelated question? I don't think any of our presenters would necessarily have the answer to, but maybe there's been some conversation around. I'm just wondering if when the vaccine becomes available to individuals 12 and under, if we are considering hosting any additional mass vaccination clinics, or if a booster shot becomes a recommendation this fall, and that would coincide with a wider population being eligible if we'd host a mass vaccination clinic again?
Jake, do you have an answer to that? I know the group that meets is the pod, Jake's the finance director for that group. I know they met here a couple of weeks ago and are having conversations. Do you have any update on that, Jake?
Yeah, there's been preliminary discussions behind the scenes, but there's nothing imminent at this point. You know, when we look at those groups 12 and under, we really have to see what that population looks like here to see if it justifies having that mass vaccination event, or if we're better off shuffling through the clinics, or if potentially the school districts themselves want to host an onsite event there. So those discussions are ongoing as we get more. You know, the booster is something that's now saying that it's going to be recommended, but there hasn't been formal action on that yet either. So discussions are ongoing, but nothing imminent at this time.
Yeah, I'm wondering, is there any way that we can move to the second item and revisit this item? Test, test this, Paul, city manager of Brookings. We're finding a lot of our technologies in this building.
Can you guys hear us?
Yep, we can hear you.
Loud and clear, thank you.
All righty, I believe this is Tim with the Department of Health. Your presentation uploaded, so if you want to just give us a cue and either we can move it forward for you, if you just kind of give us an indication when we need to move to. With the Department of Health.
Hi, thank you, and good evening. It's Tim Heath of the Department of Health, and I'm in up here. I'm the immunization program manager of the Department of Health and the COVID vaccination team co-lead as well. So I can advance to the next slide, please. I kind of wanted to show this slide today because the question has come up quite a bit. How did we get so, these vaccines so quickly? So the lifestyle of vaccine typically goes, you have a disease you want to have a vaccination for, and they start doing some research, try to find some candidate vaccines. When they have one they think that's going to work, they start through three phases of trials. Phase one is a small cohort of generally adults where they're testing just the safety of the vaccine. So they're administering the vaccine to a certain group, administering placebo to another set of groups, and then they're checking to see what adverse events happen. If they find that they have a good safety profile, then they move on to phase two to get to the effectiveness piece. This is where they vaccinate a little bit larger group of persons, and also another group that would receive placebo. And they check for their antibody response, and they also check the real world on this. Did they, you know, were they exposed to the disease? Did they become sick from the disease that this vaccine is supposed to work for? Once they get past that, they do a much larger cohort, usually 30,000 to 40,000 individuals, where they study the safety and effectiveness. They pull all their data together, and they present that data to the FDA. The FDA will take all that information into consideration. We'll meet on it and decide if this is a vaccine that is ready to move forward in the process. So since we're in the middle of a pandemic, the FDA did move forward with an EUA, which is Emergency Youth Authorization. So since we're in the middle of a pandemic, the FDA did move forward with an EUA, which is Emergency Youth Authorization. They didn't get full license served, but they did give it an emergency use authorization, and this does happen at time to time for use of the vaccine. Once it happens, Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which is an independent body that takes a look at the data and decides, okay, do we want to use this vaccine in the United States? If we do, on who, what's the dosing, what's the schedule? You know, who should be getting this vaccine? Once that happens, and it happened very rapidly with COVID vaccine, the vaccine is approved for use. But the other side of this is phase four, and a lot of people forget about this with vaccines. And even vaccines that we've had around for decades are still continually monitored for safety through several different methods, through the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. COVID, they brought a specific situation up called V-Safe, which is another arm where people could sign up and answer questions on how they're feeling after they got vaccinated. The bottom line is these vaccines are continually monitored. If they see a safety signal in the, all the data that comes in from people receiving vaccines, they can, they'll take a look at that, and they can choose to pause or issue edit to the EUA or continue on. And early on, we did have a pause of the Yanced vaccine as they were looking at some safety issues, but they determined that it was extremely rare occurrence, really not any higher than what would happen in the population that wasn't vaccinated. And then they continued on with the use of that vaccine. Now generally, this takes several years of a process to get through from starting your basic research to you get a vaccine on the market. However, the federal government did put a bunch of money towards this, which kind of made it easier for these vaccine companies to do this. They could go through all this process, and even if they didn't have a vaccine come to market, they wouldn't be out any money. So they could continue through this process without worry of loss of revenue. So this really helped, helped the vaccine process for COVID really move along and get us to the point where we're at today, where we have three vaccines in the United States on the market available for use to prevent COVID disease. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So the three vaccines on the market are Pfizer, Moderna, which are both messenger RNA vaccine, and then the Yanced vaccine, or Johnson and Johnson, sometimes it's referred to, which is a viral vector vaccine. These vaccines have proved highly effective at preventing hospitalizations and death from getting COVID. Pfizer and Moderna also are above 95% preventing lab confirmed cases. Yanced is a little bit lower at 66% at preventing lab confirmed cases. However, all three of them have been highly effective at preventing hospitalizations, preventing severe disease and preventing death. And as a result, you know, we've seen the populations that have a high vaccination coverage, the rate of hospitalizations and disease has gone down. So we have three vaccines in the market, there's also plenty of supply out there. Early on, we were constrained to supply, and we really had to target specific populations that were at the highest risk of COVID disease. And then eventually, we, at the point where we're at now, where actually, the supply that we have is bigger than the demand for the vaccine. So there's plenty of vaccine out there available for use. Next slide, please. So looking at how we've done as a state for vaccinations, and I want to provide a caveat to this. So the two orange squares at the top are doses of vaccine that are in control of the Department of Health. So there's a couple of different arms that vaccines get delivered and administered in South Dakota and in the rest of the country as well. There's vaccines that are controlled by the Department of Health in these states. And then we dole these vaccines out through an allocation process to, you know, private clinics, our normal vaccinating partners. And then they report that data back to our Immunization Information System. And the data in the orange squares is data that has been reported back to Immunization Information System. So as of Monday, this is from yesterday, 732,000 plus total doses administered, and almost 394,000 total persons that were vaccinated. And then below that, you can see the breakdown of individual vaccines and how we've done, and how much each of those vaccines have been used. Now, the blue box, we're also pulling in the federal data. So the other arm of this is the federal entities that are administering vaccine. They get their vaccines separate from the Department of Health, and they report through their own federal mechanisms back to the federal government the doses they've used. So the federal partners are the Bureau of Prisons, Department of Defense, Veterans Affairs, and the IHS facilities and tribal healths. So over 60% of the population right now has received at least one dose of vaccine in South Dakota. And then we see a serious completion of 55% plus, and this is for all persons 12 years of age and older, based on 2019 census estimates. So, you know, we're doing okay, but we do have a little ways to go. What we're trying to do here is get to the point where we get to herd immunity. You know, no vaccine is ever 100% effective. There's always going to be persons that do not develop immunity when they're vaccinated. There's also persons in the population that can't receive vaccine due to some sort of health condition. But the idea is here that we get enough people vaccinated around those people that prevents them from getting infected and prevents everyone else from getting infected. And that's herd immunity, sometimes also referred to as community immunity. Estimates where we need to get to, you know, range from 70 to 90%. I don't think we really know exactly what percent we need to get to herd immunity of COVID, because we haven't dealt with a COVID vaccine and a severe COVID disease like this before, so it's all new. But other vaccines have varying degrees of COVID immunity and herd immunity. So hopefully, we'll get to that point. We have a little bit of a slope to reach yet, but we've been moving along at a steady pace. Next slide, please. So here, this is pulled out of the federal system called Tiberius. And the point I really want to make, and a little later on, I'll make it in another way here, is that, you know, our 65-plus population, we've done really well of getting people vaccinated. But as you get younger, the vaccine rate drops. And that's been showing out in the hospitalization and case data across the country that we're seeing, you know, a shift from seniors being hospitalized and getting sick down to the younger ages groups. Because, you know, our senior population is very well vaccinated now, and the younger population is not. So the point of this slide is just that, that we have a ways to go, especially with the younger groups. Next slide, please. So just taking a look at how we've done in vaccine doses among all our partners. So I broken it out by vaccine, Pfizer on the left set of columns, Moderna on the middle set of columns, and Yanced on the right set of columns. The blue bar is the doses that have been ordered in South Dakota. The red bar, what's been shipped, and then the green bar is what's been delivered. So, you know, well over a million doses have been coming to the state so far between all the partners, between the state and the federal partners. So a lot of vaccines available. Yanced vaccine has been the least used, which is unfortunate because it's a single-dose vaccine, but we've been unable to order it for some time here, but it sounds like it's going to be available to order again towards the end of this month or early September. Although, we do have a small supply yet available in South Dakota. So next slide, please. And I break this out a little further to show how this works. So the jurisdiction, which is just South Dakota, Department of Health, doses, controlled doses, is in the blue section. The federal entity, which I talked about earlier, is in the red section. And then there's this retail pharmacy program as well. There were certain retail pharmacies early on that received doses directly from the federal government as well, and that's in the top yellow section there. But the point I'm making here is that we've really flattened out with doses being delivered into South Dakota towards late April, and we've just seen just this flat bar ever since of vaccines being ordered. You know, we kind of hit saturation there before May, and the man for the vaccine really waned starting then. So just making the point that, you know, we have vaccine and we are still looking to increase our demand. Next slide, please. This just breaks it out a little bit further, and I won't read it to you, but the top three to the left are the total doses ordered, shipped, and delivered into South Dakota. The right top three are what's been controlled by the state. The bottom three on the left is what's been coming to the retail pharmacy program. And the bottom three on the right has been doses ordered and shipped and delivered to the federal entities, which I talked about earlier. Next slide, please. And this graph just shows doses administered over time. Again, making the point that we went out like gangbusters up through mid-April and really slowed off. And then it's broken out by first and second doses. Blue is the first dose is given, and green is the second dose is given. Okay, Moderna and the Pfizer vaccine are both two-dose series. And then the Yanced vaccine, or Johnson vaccine, is a single-dose series. So this is, again, making the point of how we're doing with our vaccines. So go ahead and go to the next slide. And then this breaks it out by vaccine. Obviously, Pfizer's been around the longest, and it's also approved down to the youngest age of 12 years of age. So there's been no doses of that vaccine used. Moderna has also had some heavy use in South Dakota. And then the Yanced vaccine has had some use, but not to the point where we really would like to be. We'd like to see more use of that vaccine. We do have some vaccine, those doses available in-state, like I said earlier. And then the next slide is probably the meat and potatoes, what I really want to drive home here. And this is breaking out vaccine coverage rates by five-year increments in South Dakota. And again, like I said, the younger you get, the worse our rates are. And this is as of August 10th data pull. So, and we haven't moved up much in the last week either. But, you know, 12 to 14-year-olds are, you know, under 25%, 15 to 19, 31%, and so on. And this is typical, like, you know, kind of what we're seeing across the country. We see the younger ages kind of not doing, getting vaccinated, and that could be to a lot of reasons. They're on the fence, you know, they are against vaccination, they don't believe in, or they think they're just healthy enough, they don't need vaccine. And I think vaccine hesitancy has probably played somewhat of a role in South Dakota, as it was across the country. And I kind of look at vaccine hesitancy on a continuum. You know, on one side of the continuum, you have people that are never going to take the vaccine. On the other side, you got people that'll always take the vaccine. And you've got this middle people that are anywhere from least likely to take the vaccine to very likely to take the vaccine. And these are the people that, you know, we can make some inroads with to help get them vaccinated. And a lot of the work needs to be done. So we're working as a department to get the messaging across that we are, you know, vaccine's available, vaccine is free, the vaccine's safe and effective. One thing we've noticed is particularly in South Dakota, the people least likely to get vaccine are younger, typically below the poverty line, and typically have not received the vaccine in the last two years, which is really the point we want to drive home, that this vaccine is free. You won't be charged for the vaccine, you won't be charged for administration, you won't be charged for any supplies, et cetera. So that messaging has been out there quite a bit, and we will keep providing that message across the state. So go to the next slide, please. So what, as a community, what you can do, what can you do to help? And, you know, I'm not saying don't go out and coerce anybody to get vaccine or anything like that, but I think just to have that conversation, you know, let them know the information you have. If you haven't vaccinated, let them know that, say, I got the vaccine, and, you know, I didn't have any bad outcomes from it, and, you know, and I feel really good. And, you know, we really need to provide accurate information. And, you know, our coviddotst.gov is where we have, you know, all the current data, all the information out there that's available on all these vaccines, as well as, you know, disease progressions and rates of disease as well. And of course, cdc.gov is a very good resource as well. They're kind of the definitive resource for, you know, all things COVID right now. So, you know, you know your community, you know what works, you know how people feel. And I just think that conversation you have with your neighbors, with, you know, people in your stores, with, you know, wherever, is really would be beneficial, just to talk about it, you know, not to hide it or anything like that. I'm a really firm believer of community-level involvement. So the last slide I wanted to bring up, go ahead and switch, is the Delta variant. And I'm not an epidemiologist, so I can't give you a lot of information on this, but I did get this slide from the state epidemiologist to provide to you. So as you know, we're hearing a lot of information about the Delta variant in the news. And, you know, viruses do mutate by changing their nucleic acid, and, you know, that makes the virus a little bit different from the virus, previous virus that it mutated from. So looking at the data, RNa is a measure of how infectious an agent is, viral bacterial. And with the original strain of COVID, approximately three people would get infected for every person that was infected. With the Delta variant, it's, you know, double. It's approximately five to seven people get infected from a single infected person. So it is very infectious, more infectious than the original strain, which is why it's a very concerning strain that's out there right now. And we're seeing in Region Eight, which is the region that South Dakota's in, that the Delta strain is the dominant strain on vaccines, or on the viruses that are what's called sequenced down to that level, so we can determine what strain it is. And in South Dakota, we know that, you know, when the strains that we do characterize down to that level, the majority are Delta variant. So the Delta variants here, it's currently becoming the dominant strain across the country, and it does appear to be more infectious. And of course, the best way to stop the spread of Delta and any other variant of COVID currently is to get vaccinated. So I really hope that we can really strive to do a good job of getting information out there and getting people the confidence they need to get vaccinated. So that is my last slide. I can pause there. I do have a couple of minutes for questions, but I apologize, I do have to leave. I do have another appointment at 6:00.
Holly, do you have any question then?
Yes. Question, since we have this slide up here. It says the best way to stop the spread of the Delta variant is to get vaccinated. For folks, because we do know that it takes approximately five to six weeks from your first dose of one of the two-dose vaccines until you are fully inoculated, what is something that folks can do kind of in that in-between time, if anything, to protect themselves while they're kind of waiting for that five-to-six-week period to take place?
Yeah, thank you. I caught maybe 30% of that, it cut out pretty severely. And I think you're asking what folks can do for mitigation before they're considered fully vaccinated or fully immune. Weeks after the last dose of a vaccine series, if we consider fully immune. And persons who are concerned should follow the mitigations, things that we've did all along. You know, make sure they're washing their hands, make sure they're, if they're really concerned, you know, they can mask or stay out of the public, or just keep their distance from the public as well. The mitigations that we've done in the past all apply here right now to people that wish to take those steps to ensure their safety when they're out and about. So I would suggest masking, I would suggest washing your hands, using sanitizer if you need to, and avoiding crowds.
I have one more. To the vaccines for those under the age of 12. Earlier in your presentation, there was a slide that kind of showed what the timeline looks like when testing vaccines. Do we know where we're at in that timeline in terms of children 12 and under? And if we do find ourselves in a spot where those vaccines are approved for those 12 and under, do we anticipate having the necessary supply of doses for that population when that time comes?
Yeah, again, you cut out. When do we think we'll be vaccinated at the age of 12, and then what will the supply look like? So I don't have a real good idea of when they will approve vaccines under the age of 12. I do think it'll be towards the end of the year or maybe early next year, but I, you know, like I said, I don't have 100% look into that. It's just what I hear from colleagues around the country. Right now, our supply of vaccine is really good. I don't anticipate having any issues once we lower that age gap. They've been pushing out vaccine pretty regularly, and I've done a very good job of getting vaccine made. And in fact, we ramped up very quickly. Just to kind of put it in perspective, we've probably, you know, done, you know, three or four years with the vaccinations within this, you know, short timeframe from December 14th to now. And that's really indicative of how fast the vaccine manufacturers were able to make vaccine. It's also indicative of how well our partners have done in vaccinating the public.
Any other questions or comments?
I got one question. Mayor Niemeyer here, Tim. When and if the vaccine is approved for 12 and under, is there, is it going to be, how do you want to say? A diluted-type vaccination? Or will it be a smaller dose, since the child is?
Yeah. You know, I don't know that answer. I know all those things are, all those things are. I know all those things are being studied. What amount of dosage is needed in the younger population to produce an immune response? I don't have, you know, I really can't say on that one. I know they're looking at all things like that, you know, looking at the amount of dose or splitting doses to see what the most effective way and dosage is in the younger ages.
I was just curious. I would assume that's part of the process of the study that they're doing right now, I would assume?
That is correct.
Thank you. What next, Paul?
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate your time. On the call, we also have Bonnie.
So the slide. So the threshold committee that reviewed the data last year, we met Sunday night to discuss what's been going on with the data so far, especially in the last couple of weeks, and thought we would update people on that. Next slide. You can see here that Brookings has been doing really well over the summer. We were down in the low range and we are now in the highest range. One of the things that's important to also realize is that the Department of Health and the CDC have both changed their method for determining the level of community spread. And they now have four categories of moderate, or low, moderate, substantial, and high. And it's based on two things. Before, it was based just on number of new cases per week, per 100,000 population. And now they're also using the percent test positivity based on PCR testing, since you can have a low number of cases if you don't have very much testing going on. So this slide just shows the number of cases per week over the last, since this pandemic started. And you can see that we've increased quite substantially in the last couple of weeks. And this is likely due to that Delta variant. Next slide. And this is the test positivity with the new cutoffs added. And if anyone ever looks at the weekly COVID slides, this test positivity is now the one that Department of Health actually posts on their website. I used a different denominator last year. This is the new denominator so that we could be consistent with what the CDC and DOH are using. So this just shows that we're in substantial spread based on the test positivity. And the CDC and Department of Health use the highest of these two to define the community level of spread. Next slide. I just want to remind people of what's happened. This blue line is Brookings and the orange line is South Dakota. And early last September, we had the mask mandate. And that, along with other possible reasons, you know, we were able to blunt this peak that occurred in November. Right now, we are higher than, we have a higher rate than South Dakota in terms of population size. And both of them are increasing quite substantially. Next slide. And if you look at Louisiana, I'm sure you've all heard of Louisiana, Florida, Alabama, all their curves are pretty much the same. You can see that we're trailing them right now by about a month. If we continue to follow this particular pattern, it won't be very much fun in the next couple of months. Next slide. And here we have South Dakota. This is hospitalizations. Last year, it peaked, and then we're starting to see increases again. And again, we're behind Louisiana by several weeks in what they've seen. But the curve is looking very similar, at least the beginnings of this curve. Next slide. This I put out in one of the weekly slides, and it's just showing the percent. It's an estimate of what percent of the population is susceptible. And the way I did this is I looked at the percent with one or more vaccines and the percent of people testing positive. And assuming that the people who tested positive, that group of people do not overlap with the percent receiving vaccines, which is not true. But if we just add this up and subtract it from 100, that gives us the percent of the population that's still susceptible to this virus. And you can see that Brookings is one of the more susceptible counties within the state. And Pennington and Lawrence are the most susceptible. The thing to remember here is that the Pfizer vaccine, a paper just came out. People were reporting this earlier, but the actual data just came out this week showing that if you just have one dose of Pfizer vaccine, it's only 30% effective against this Delta variant. Whereas if you have two doses, that increases up to 80%. So this percent of people that have had one or more vaccines are not necessarily fully protected if they didn't complete their series. Next slide. This was off of the CDC website, and this is for Brookings County data. It's different than what Tim just presented. But if you look at the total population of Brookings County, only 36% of the population has been fully vaccinated. That means we have about 22,000 people that are susceptible, not counting those who have natural immunity from the infection, which may be 12% is what we've tested positive. If you look at 12 and older, we have 42%. And you can see, as Tim was mentioning, this number gets better as you get older because of that increase in vaccination rates among the older populations. Next slide. And I need to find this online because I can't, what I can see on my thing is really small. These are projections out of the University of Washington. This is for the state of South Dakota. And the purple line here, this middle one, is what they are projecting in terms of infections. And this reddish line is the worst-case scenario. And what we have here is if there were universal masking occurring at the state level. Next slide. And on this one, we have the hospitalizations that are projected here. And this is the ICU beds with this new Delta variant. These are estimates as of August 5th. And I would just like to mention that on the previous slide where they were talking about cases, we're already above where they had projected us to be statewide. Next slide. And here we have the daily number of deaths that are projected, as well as the worst-case scenario here, and if there was universal masking implemented. Next slide. And one of the things I wanted to mention that I think is very important is that, as Tim mentioned, they're seeing more children being hospitalized with this Delta variant. Part of it could be that the vaccination rates are lower in these lower age groups. This graph on the left, this is for the United States. These are under 18 years of age. You can see that we've had more hospitalizations than we did last year at any time point. Same with the 16 or 18 to 29-year age group, which is different than in the older people where we see a lower number of hospitalizations than we did at last year's peak. And just as a, to bring it a little bit more home, children in South Dakota are being hospitalized. Four of the 20 hospital admissions in South Dakota for last week were in the less-than-20-year age group. Next slide. And this one I just added because I think it's showing what's happening pretty dramatically. This is in the last three weeks. We've gone from many of the counties being low to moderate spread to, this is what's posted today on the CDC website, which is as of October 15th, almost all of the counties in South Dakota are now in high community spread level. And both the orange counties and the red counties, these are the ones that CDC currently recommends masking while indoors in any county with substantial or high transmission. So, and this is the website that has those maps. They are updated by the CDC every night during the week. Next slide. And just a summary, this is infographic showing what Tim mentioned, show that the previous variants, or the original SARS-CoV-2 virus, one infected person could transmit to about two people. And this Delta virus is transmitting to about five different people. And then the Swiss cheese model of prevention, and how each one of these methods are not 100% successful. But combined, it makes it very difficult to become infected. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you, Bonnie.
I believe Patrick had to sign off. Patrick, today that there's testing anywhere from 25 to 45 individuals a day now. So the testing has increased. I do believe Bonnie, or I'm sorry, Amy Sanford is on the phone still with us. Amy, do you have any updates for the council?
Hi, yeah, Patrick. Would echo what he had visited with you about yesterday. We are starting to see about, starting to revamp our testing process again, unfortunately. So would just echo the vaccinations. We're going to be holding some more vaccination clinics here. We've had a good response with our 12 and 12 to 18-year-olds group. And we'll be, I mean, they're available to anyone. So we are just kind of in that ramping back up and hopefully kind of that wait-and-see, so.
One, this is Bonnie again. And one thing that I haven't mentioned is that we haven't seen a hospitalization in Brookings County for most of the summer. And this past week, there have been four new hospitalizations. I should say in the past six days, because it's not yet been a week of new data. But there have been four hospitalizations.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Bonnie. SDSU to give us a quick update on the plans at SDSU.
Thank you. Daniel Scholl, South Dakota State University, I reside in Brookings. I'll give you just a brief update of how we are moving into the academic year and our planning. First, during the course of the summer, as you may, many of you may recall, we expanded our testing, COVID-19 testing availability beyond students to include employees and to include members of the community. And up through yesterday, we conducted a little over 700 tests. 172 of those were from members of the community. So we're very pleased to have the community taking advantage of that. 419 were from among our employees, with some repeat testing among employees. And the remainder, just shy of 115, were among students. And we had a total of nine positives cumulatively among those. And this is all with the saliva-based PCR test that's offered to us and other institutions by, well, it's offered to everyone in South Dakota. But institutions have a particular arrangement, a line of connection with the Vault Health System through, by means of a contract with the South Dakota Department of Health. And that's worked out very, very well. We will continue testing options during the academic year, starting on the 23rd of August. We'll go back to students and we'll be able to include employees in most of those options as well going forward. But we won't be able to offer testing to members of the community after Friday. That'll end on Friday of this week. We maintain our two evaluation and decision-making committees within the university. Our COVID response team, a subset of our emergency management team that remains activated to respond to current data. And the right here, right now, hence the name "response" and the response team name. And that team then is responsible for making recommendations to university leadership as to immediate-term and perhaps longer-term actions. That group is currently meeting weekly. We need to ramp it up to multiple times per week, or even daily or multiple times per day, as it has been at points in the past. Of course, we can do that readily. The second group is our Jax-Arback team, which has quite a lot of overlap with the COVID response team. But that team is responsible in particular for taking a long-term view and planning, to the degree possible, with the information possible, planning our mitigation efforts for the university community. The Board of Regents and board staff are very committed to a well-coordinated response and mitigation actions among the institutions that comprise the system. And so our major mitigation actions will involve decision-making with the board staff and with the board. Partly for that reason, we have stopped publishing our color-coded safety level chart that contained in it. If you've spent time looking at that, you know that that chart has contained in it triggers for mitigation actions. Because mitigation actions now are, they've always been a part of our engagement with the board, but that degree of engagement and coordination has been stepped up. Mitigation actions are not simply triggered by safety levels. So we are simply reporting the data that's available to everyone else. And that is the degree of transmission taking place in Brookings County, where the main campus, the university, of course, is located, so as to communicate consistently with the data that's available to decision-makers throughout the state, including the Department of Health. As students come back, we will be launching, or continuing our efforts at offering and encouraging participation in getting vaccinated among our students. We'll have a campaign straddling the end of August, beginning of September. The details of that campaign are being worked out, even considering what our options are, what we can and can't do effectively to encourage vaccination, including incentives. But even outside of that campaign, walk-in vaccination through student health counseling services will be available to students at no cost throughout the academic year. We maintain our quarantine and isolation housing. So students who have tested positive, who are sick, who have evidence of infection, can be well taken care of in our quarantine and isolation housing. We have abundant space for that. I think those are the high points of what we're doing, basically, as we're watching the data like everyone else and thoughtfully asking ourselves questions about whether or not we need to shift, when, what that might look like. We will engage with the Board of Regents and the board staff proactively as we see, if we see conditions unfolding. Our desire is to prepare ourselves in order to be able to maintain operations at the university and to not present an unnecessary and undue risk to the rest of the Brookings community where we reside. And if there's time, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. And if there's time, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to take questions.
Any questions from council? Comments? Councilmember Tiltonburn?
My question is, knowing that the community is now in that high spread, has that impacted the thought process as to what students coming back to town is going to look like on campus?
It hasn't changed the plans in place. Of course, they've always been constructed with thoughtfulness and mind-knowing from the very, very beginning that we may have to change quickly. But the plans as, as they've been formulated are, are still in place.
Daniel, is the other university approach, or is everybody on their own?
One of the things that have happened is that everybody be on their own. And so this, this high level of coordination among the institutions, working through the board office is, is to achieve a, a level of systematization across the six institutions. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. The other question I have is, which, which vaccine did you use?
We have Janssen vaccine, single-dose vaccine, and the Moderna vaccine available to us.
So they have a choice?
Yes, they do have a choice. The choices are usually pretty clear.
Nick? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Scholl, I wanted to clarify something. I think, you know, one of the things that seemed to serve us well last year is that some of the major partners in our community were able to work together, the city and the university and the school district kind of all moved together at the same time responding locally to what our needs were here in Brookings. It's sounding to me like there's maybe a, an approach moving into this academic year that all six public universities will move together in whatever direction might be necessary. Am I gleaning that correctly, where one university is not going to be able to respond locally, but all six will vet their plan through the board office?
So, yes and no. Certainly, there's, there's a desire for the six institutions of the system to, to work in step with one another and tandem with one another, but their information comes from us. And so we remain, as an institution, as an important member of this community, we remain committed to planning well, executing well, coordinating well with the community. And what's going, what goes on in the community and the needs dictated by conditions unfolding on the ground here will drive the messages and requests and advocacy that we engage in for system-wide action.
Thank you.
So that's, how's that for a, an answer that covers all the bases?
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's pretty much. Other presenters, or any comments from anyone?
No, other than, I would just comment that later this week, the marketing committee was Friday. We have also taken down our color-coded measures within the city because right now we're not really following them. And so what we're going to do is try to make sure that we're in lockstep with our community partners and communicating to the community where we are. Right now, we're in high spread, and so we're going to try to figure out how that works for us. One of the things that staff does desire from councils, if you guys are interested in, in moving different measures, to let us know as, as we maneuver through this process, either if it's a resolution of recommendations or any type of regulation as well, giving the timing of meetings. So I would just leave it at that. I believe Nick had an additional question.
I did. Mine is a bit more about how we incentivize vaccination participation, in particular as we anticipate a fall where hopefully there'll be more widespread and publicly shared approval from the FDA and potentially broadening the, the age range of those that will be eligible. Do we know, I have a pretty strong sense that the state of South Dakota is not going to incentivize vaccines as we've seen other states do, but I'm curious if, if we can apply federal dollars on a local level to incentivize in Brookings County or the city of Brookings. We've seen some municipalities across the country use dollars to incentivize participation. I'm wondering if that's something that we, we could consider as we look at relatively low vaccination participation among folks 40 and under in our community right now?
That's something that I asked our CFO to ask today, actually. It's interesting, other states have direct funding directly from the federal government to the municipality. Here in South Dakota, we're going back through the state for local funding. I don't believe the county has that process, so therefore they have one less level to overcome. But it is something that we're, we're asking, we can sure share that information with you once we find the answer.
And we go into item six, discussion on fuel prices in the city of Brookings. City Manager Paul Priscino will present this item also.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmembers. By Councilmember Collins here a few weeks ago to study the, the price of fuel here in the community of Brookings. We did a little analysis and understand that there is a state excise tax of about 30 cents per gallon on fuel charged here in this community, or across the state. Just looking at price, fuel prices at the time of the writing of this memo, I did note that we are lower than the national average and lower than the state average here in South Dakota as of last week. I don't know if Sturgis had anything to do with that increase last week, but we are lower, but there are communities within proximity that are about anywhere from 10 to 15 cents lower than us. There was a question whether or not sales tax was charged on fuel, and there is not. Majority of fuel does not have sales tax charged, but we are responsible for roads and infrastructure within our own community to the tune of about $4 to $5 million a year. The state does use that 30 cents in excise tax for their own roads and buildings and, or bridges and infrastructure throughout the, the state. So with that said, we did not find any laws that allowed municipalities to regulate the price of fuel, and I will note that we did invite a number of local fuel stations to the, the conversation for tonight as well. Would that be more than happy to answer? Any questions that you might have?
Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for putting this together. That's a lot of information I didn't know prior to asking the question a while back. I am sort of disappointed that nobody showed up today to talk about it. Like we said, the council has no authority over gas prices or anything else like milk or bread. We can't regulate prices or anything like that, but I thought it would be a great platform to get the conversation going. Everybody talks about it, it seems, at coffee or dinner or something like that. I know I've been asked about it as, as well. Brookings County, or like you said, Paul, the Brookings County is below the national average. However, I'm not able to answer the question why the towns around us are much lower than we are here. So, thank you for all the research and thank you for the work you did. I really appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments?
When we reached out to the various gas station owners, any discussion during that invitation time or any communication that they gave at that point?
The communication that was given to me is just that they didn't choose to participate. One was their email, one was their phone call, and I know Joey reached out to an individual as well, and they chose not to participate as well. Just anecdotally, I've been in three university towns, and I can tell you that the fuel price has always been five to 10 to 15 cents higher than surrounding communities. And what I've always understood, it was just the market.
I, any other question?
Just to comment, I did this, we drove up to Aberdeen for an event that we had to go to, and we went on through Smith and up that way and through Redfield on the way up, and then came back through Watertown and, you know, Clark and Dolan. And just observed what the fuel prices were, and it looked like there was just about a dime spread. And we were about the same as Clark and in Aberdeen, and then there were some, you know, that I think Volga was, you know, maybe a dime cheaper, but it wasn't a huge spread, you know, and so I don't know. I've always, but I am surprised at how many people get upset about that that they've talked to, you know, that are friends of mine, and then, and I say something about that, and I get gas at a station because it's on my way home, you know? I don't, I don't think I even look at the price necessarily, but a lot of people do, you know, and they just, they will drive, you know, to a different community to get gas because it's seven cents different. So I don't know what the answer is, but it's, I think a lot of places too, there's a lot of, you know, that's the other part of it. When we did pay for gas on Saturday, we only paid a dollar and a half because we had our fuel saver, you know? So there's a lot of, the market is funny in Brookings with that thrown in there, that what that price is, is not the price people necessarily are paying, you know? It's the, it's kind of a, a different market, and when you have something like that in the market, they take a lot of gallons away from, that would have been sold by somebody else, so they got to make their overhead somehow, you know? So if you, if you sell half as many gallons, you know, you've got to make your, still got to pay the bills. I think there's a lot of different reasons it can be a little bit higher here.
Okay. Any other question? All right, we'll move on to item seven, discussion on medical marijuana. Our city manager, Paul, will present this item also.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Steve isn't with us in his, his spot. We also have with us our consultant, who's been working with Steve throughout this process on the legislative information that's before you tonight. Bill comes from us from Colorado, former city manager, and has a family member that's the Assistant City Attorney in Yankton as well. This item was brought to you and it, and it contains three different ordinances that I'll, I'll talk briefly on, just to put context into the discussion tonight. All ordinances have been tabled until the next meeting, August 24th. With that said, we can hold additional hearings in September if you need it, if there's substantial changes to the ordinance, we can do that as well. So you have up to roughly three hearings. Our hope is to have something in place by October 1. October 1 is when the state will be coming out. If we don't have things properly in place, then it's, it's kind of a free-for-all in extent. But tonight, hopefully, we can clarify a lot of the, the questions the council has, a lot of it I heard regarding the quantity of, of establishments within the community, but also talking through the different ordinances. So with that said, the first ordinance that we brought to you is 21-25, and that establishes the zoning for cannabis establishments. We do have a GIS map, which we can pull up for you, that shows the buffering between those areas. Specifically, as we start with the dispensary zoning, we are recommending allowing those within all business B1 through B4 districts, and Mike can show you that here on the computer. Now, the state law does prohibit a buffer of about 1,000 feet, or of 1,000 feet from any, those yellow circles around that. On July 27th, city council did remove the 300-foot buffer between cannabis dispensaries, and I will note that some various communities are limiting the quantity of establishments through the zoning buffering. The larger the buffers, the less establishments you can have. Testing, manufacturing, cultivation zones, staff did recommend allowing those within the I-1. But talking to Bill today and talking with Mike, we do have some I-1 within the center part of the community, and knowing that, we are recommending or suggesting manufacturing, there is certain odors that can come from those establishments, so we would further recommend potentially a 1,000-foot buffer from any residential, so you wouldn't have this located in the center of Brookings. You would still allow it on the west end or east end, but once again, there's a pretty pungent smell from what we understand from those manufacturing, or from those cultivation facilities. Manufacturing's not so much, or the testing. So that's the zoning. Ordinance 21-27 is an ordinance we brought forward to you if council wanted to set the specific quantity of dispensaries as well as testing, manufacturing, cultivation facilities. And so that's if you want to set a specific number. Now, IM-26 does require at least one dispensary, however, the city can prohibit down to zero manufacturing, testing, cultivations of any facilities within the community. Now, the final ordinance, 21-28, sets the, the licensing process for dispensaries. The ordinance does not contain anything in there for the testing, the cultivation, or the manufacturing, so if council should allow those through this discussion and through the, the action, then we'll have to add those into the licensing process. So once again, with us tonight, we have Bill, who I'll probably go and turn it over to to talk a little bit about his experience in Colorado. Once again, he was part of the process when it was initially implemented in Colorado as a city manager, and then, of course, being part of the industry through other facets as well. Mike is also here, and we could talk more about zoning. We did add a tool so that we can provide measurements, so if you wanted to see how that might impact some of these zones as well. Because last week, or over the past few weeks, I did hear from councils, some desires to have no restrictions on quantity, some on quantity of dispensaries, and so based on that buffer, if you wanted to, you could do it through a zoning buffer. I would recommend anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 feet. That would limit you to about four or five throughout the community, and it'd be kind of on first-come, first-served, rather than doing a specific quantity called out and then going through an application process. But we can talk more about that through the conversations with Bill and Mike. So would that, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Paul. And Bill Efting, it was in 2012 when Amendment 64 was passed in Colorado, and we were all sitting in a room kind of like this going...
Bill? Mike? A little bit closer. Go ahead and move it and adjust it down to where it's comfortable for you.
How's that?
Thank you.
In 2012, we were sitting, and this, in 40 years of government, I think I've only sat here three times, usually sitting where Paul was, but we didn't have a clue on what to do. We were waiting for information from the state, and in 2014, it became legal. We were somewhat lost for a while, and, and I think the advantage that South Dakota has is that you've had nine to eight years to study what other states have done correctly and what we've done wrong. And, and knowing that is going to be a big help. In Colorado, we had the, the opportunity to opt out of medical or recreational marijuana totally. And to this date, there's still about a little less than 50% of the municipalities in Colorado that allow the sale of medical or recreational marijuana. Colorado Springs is probably the biggest. Westminster, where I live, north of Denver, is also one of those cities, but they're surrounded by other cities with dispensaries all around them. Paul mentioned the zoning way of looking at, at your dispensaries, and one of the first things that most of the towns did in Colorado, and my town's included, was we got our maps out, and we looked at our cities and our towns, and we looked at where potential sites could be. Because we weren't sure, first of all, if we wanted to have the sale of marijuana, and secondly, where it would best go. Most, and I worked in Colorado resort towns, Aspen, Frisco, Assault, and Avon, and some of those towns stayed away from Main Street. Frisco was the, the town where I was when it really got rolling, and we opted out of, and it was just a little one-lane, about 12 blocks of curio shops and other types of stores, and at that time, my city council didn't feel that that was an adequate place to put dispensaries. City of Breckenridge, a little further up, put theirs on the outskirts as well. But there are some towns, you can go to Denver right now, right close to Union Station, and you can walk by a store and not even know it's a dispensary. It's in some of the older buildings, and it's, it's amazing what nine years has done with the feeling about the sale of marijuana in Colorado. It wasn't the sky is falling in as I thought it was going to be. And it can be administered through the municipalities and the state, and, and it can work out similar to liquor licenses, similar to store, liquor stores, and, and it works. And I was, when I talked to Paul's staff today, I didn't see the, the eyes of fear in the room like we had 10 years ago. So I think by looking at zoning, that, that's a good place to start, because you have that opportunity in South Dakota to decide where you want to put them. You also have the opportunity in South Dakota to select the number of dispensaries. Myself, I've always been conservative, and what we did in Yankton, and I've been working with the city of Yankton since February, and their applications are actually online now for dispensaries. They went with two. I know Sioux Falls, I believe, went with five. There'll be some towns and cities in South Dakota that won't have a limit. That's, that's the council decision to make. But I think in, in a city the size, the population of Brookings at 24,000, and I haven't been to Brookings since I was in college in Vermillion, and that was a very long time ago. But before I get into more of my marijuana, you guys have done an amazing job with... But before I get into more of my marijuana, you guys have done an amazing job with this city. I was a Parks and Rec director at first, and I can drive into a town and look at the flowers, and look at the way the trees are maintained, and how clean it is. And I knew that a lot of people are doing something really good. So heads up to you guys, you're doing a great job in Brookings. But with, back with the quantity, and I don't have a big dog and pony show for you. And I figure there's more information gained by questions and answers of things that we went through in Colorado. We didn't think of everything. And they're still learning today, such as in Denver right now. They are allowing home deliveries right to the door. It started with liquor deliveries a few years back, and now it's into marijuana. I did notice in your ordinance, until you get a good grip on it, I think your ordinance really reads well, where there are no deliveries or that type of service. Because you don't know what the community is going to judge marijuana on in South Dakota. I mean, to be honest, I was a little surprised it passed in the election. I really was kind of shocked. But it's happening all over the country, and it's only a matter of time till all states have it. Your grow operations, and in Yankton, they only approved an ordinance for medical marijuana dispensaries. They did not include grow operations, they did not include testing sites, and they did not include the production of edibles. But they are going to be looking at in the near future, because the real test begins when recreational starts. Medical seems to work, and I think the key for South Dakota is how they're going to administrate the amount of prescriptions they write. Minnesota did a pretty good job, from what my research I've done, of limiting the amount of medical marijuana prescriptions. You really didn't need it as a medicine. Colorado didn't do that great of a job. There were some doctors, if you limped when you walked in, you got a prescription. So I think a lot of what you're facing is going to come out of peer. And that's going to be, and I know they've come out with a new 100-page guideline for the applications, and some of their regulations, after talking with the Yankton city attorney today, are even stronger than the city regulations. So when people are applying for that, they're also giving them a copy of the state regulations. Because in some instances, they're, they really outlined it more than most of us cities did. But some of the things that we weren't prepared for with medical or recreational marijuana is, is one of the things that really jumped was, and I don't know if you have a panhandling problem in Brookings or not, but we did in Colorado, we did more so after marijuana. They'd be at the corners of the grocery stores with signs where there was dispensaries close, "Do you have any extra marijuana?" And we're kind of going, wow, we didn't expect that. We didn't expect the dispensaries to offer to do roadside signs for your cleanup in the ditches. We didn't expect them to donate prizes and gifts to our Parks and Recreation Department on fundraisers. And there's a lot of little things that are involved with marijuana, just besides it becoming legal. But I met about six months ago with the executive director of the Colorado Municipal League. And the one question I asked him is, his name is Kevin Bommer, I said, "What did, what's one of the things that we missed?" And one of the things that Colorado missed that I don't think South Dakota's going to miss is the edibles. Because there wasn't really a great control mechanism on the testing and that when the edibles first came out. Because some guy from Iowa would come in and take a half a bite of one of those gummies, and nothing would happen for 20 or 30 minutes. Well, he made the decision that must not be working, I better have a couple more. Well, in about an hour, he had plenty. And the packaging and those kinds of things that the state of South Dakota is doing is going to be much better than we started with in Colorado. The other thing with medical, and I'm kind of blunt at times, and my company is Common Sense Consulting. People are going to be applying for medical marijuana dispensaries, betting on that recreational is going to be, get through the lawsuit, because that is where the money is made. It's not made in medical. It's not made on the sales taxes that the municipalities receive on medical marijuana. It's made on recreational. And they're, the bigger groups all over the country that are in the business are looking at South Dakota. And to be totally straightforward, I have a son that 10 years ago gave me a call and said, "Dad, I've been offered a job." And I said, "Well, what could that be, Casey?" He had went to college with three guys, roommates, that opened a company called Green Solutions in Denver, Colorado. It just sold for $130 million. They opened 28 dispensaries in the Denver area and other towns in Colorado. And so I get a lot of my information from my son on, you know, where's the money made? How many dispensaries can a city accommodate where people are still making money? And in Yankton, we had a whole hour discussion with him on the phone on security. Because law enforcement, their eyes will kind of open up when we talk security of the dispensaries. Well, the dispensaries for recreational marijuana will do a great job themselves. Because they are protecting their product and their employees. And in, there's a medical dispensary in Sioux City that's more, because it's a different type of cat. It doesn't even have a locked door. You can just walk in off the street. Most of the recreational dispensaries in Colorado have a breezeway where you come in, show your ID, and then you get buzzed through into the showroom. And in the showroom, you're escorted through all the places, and you'll pick out what you want. And at the end, there's four or five cash registers. You check out and you go out a different door. So the security is good. Most of them are averaging 40 to 50 cameras inside the dispensary for stuff from the inside and from the outside. They also have a room with a very good safe and steel walls so that their product at night, because the other thing, and I did notice in your ordinance, is that they take the stuff away at night and lock it up. So you can't have a stash and grab and walk them by, break a window, and break into a dispensary. But I did look at the tapes of your last couple meetings, and Paul's kind of helped me on the issues that you're dealing with, and I'm here to answer questions. Okay, thank you.
In your opinion, do you think that we should be operating in South Dakota in. Recreational is a foregone conclusion? Do you think that's a helpful way to be thinking when we're structuring these processes?
I think it's a proactive way to be thinking. I believe it will happen. I believe it could be slowed down through lawsuits and that type of stuff. But I think pretty much every state where they filed suits against it, it happened. So I think it's a very proactive way to look at it. Councilman Avery?
The thing that confuses me a little bit is when we talk about medical marijuana, and then we talk about recreational. Is there a distinction? Is it a different product? Is, like, if, once you have recreational, does, is medical just, and will a state still give, have to give medical cards? Or will that system go away? Because.
They will. There'll be a lot less medical dispensaries though. Because they will convert into recreational. And the bigger outfits will usually keep one or two medical. Because they do, they've had these clients and patients for a long time. And in some cases, the medical's a little less expensive than the recreational.
Because it's regulated, or?
Of course, regulated, and they also, I think in the business, realize that there's a need for it. And they do look at those folks as patients.
That was my concern too, is this, you know, is, if we're going to talk about it in terms of helping people that really need it, is there a level of, a higher level of testing, or, you know, do we really know what it is?
Well, the amount of, of, the degree of the marijuana is tested by the state. And there are certain strains, and there's hundreds of strains of marijuana. They're always working on new things. But with the prescription, it should have on the dosage for folks and things like that. But they do have some choices.
Yeah, I would just clarify, I know we're talking medical and a little bit of recreational there. But the ordinances before you tonight specifically do call out medical. So if recreational does become legal, then that discussion will be had before council as well. Bill, would you comment a little bit about the growing operations? I know councils had a lot of discussion on that, where they should go in Colorado, whether or not you allowed them throughout the communities, what you saw where they were allowed, and some things to consider as they think about this regulation.
In the towns that I was in, they were smaller towns, and we did not allow grow sites. There is an odor, but it's something that the industry is working on with filtration systems and things like that to stop the odors. But there, the one I remember between Glenwood Springs and Aspen was on Highway 82. It's a two-lane road, four lanes and a few spots. But a grow operation was put on the right side of the highway, and the county, it was in the county. So the county had to come in and really turn some elbows and get them to improve that, or they were going to shut them down. There are spots in Denver where there's grow operations along I-70. When you drive by, you can smell marijuana. And in South Dakota, and I didn't know snow came straight down until I moved to Colorado. But you always have wind blowing here. And I noticed on the weather today, they said, "Oh, it's only going to be 20 to 25." That's a hurricane in Colorado. So there will be some odors with some grow sites. And I think that's why a lot of the city councils that I worked with just didn't pick that as one of the fights they wanted to have, because there will be complaints. Lee, you got another question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I think I heard that Sioux Falls is going to be allowing up to five, and Yankton two. What is Brookings County doing?
I spoke briefly with Brookings County the other day, and what I understand, they're not going to allow anything other than dispensaries. And they're looking at just a handful of them in the unincorporated areas. Now, each town's going to be up to their own. I know Steve did communicate with some of the larger towns in Brookings County to help share our ordinances and licensing process as well.
Is a handful, three, five, 10?
What I understood is closer to that, five.
And do we know anything about how they're structuring?
I believe very similar to ours. I think they're just going to set a limit, though. When you look at the county unincorporated areas, it's very difficult to find a place that offers, you know, enough water, sewer, what have you, within proximity. Because if you're too close to the city, then you're in that joint jurisdiction area, at least for the city of Brookings. And that's where we have to have further conversations, how that's going to act with both regulations.
And then, an additional question, and one that's been confusing me, is I'm not quite sure how our proposed ordinances for licensure are matching up and mapping with the state's process, because it's unclear to me which happens first. Do they apply for a medicinal dispensary in Brookings, and then they work on the state application? Or do they do the state application, and only once that is vetted, do we entertain applications here at the local level?
Bill, maybe I'll turn that over to you, because you have experience directly with Yankton, how they're doing it, and you might talk about the timing, too.
It's going to start in Brookings. The state will not even look at it until they have approval from the city of Brookings. And in Yankton, we put 30 days in there to approve or deny an application. Then it's sent up to peer. I think 30 days, 30 to 45 days is a pretty good time to get those applications in order. Because there's a lot that goes into them, as you had in your ordinance, with the site plans, the background checks, that type of thing. And it's really one of those things that I wouldn't want to rush into. I think your staff is well-versed on it, and they're getting stronger all the time on it, but it does start with Brookings. And from my understanding is, once it goes to the state, they're going to evaluate them, and they're going to make the decision for Brookings. You won't be selecting the winners and the losers. It will be the state of South Dakota, is my understanding.
Does that preclude that all of this happens at the same time? Again, this is what is really confusing, because how, how do those applications trickle in if we talk about, like, maybe five in our community, for example?
Well, like Yankton opened up their applications, the sooner your ordinance is passed, the sooner the clock will start running. And you will have the 30 or 45 days to get it to the state. And I think the state has until October something to finalize their guidelines. And then in November has to start making decisions. That's the way I read it the last time. But it's been kind of changing as things go on, as is pretty common in state capitals.
So theoretically, if we wanted to ensure that an applicant is not going to be successful at the state level, we would decline the application at the local level?
If they didn't meet your criteria.
Right, okay. So we're not going to know anything about the state's vetting process when we have to make the decisions locally? And so we're going to have to be doing all of those background checks, all of that information processing in-house?
Yeah, everything that's called out in the current ordinance for the licensing.
And that's why there's the cost affiliated with your application fee, whether it's 3,000 or 4,000, whatever you decide on. I believe Yankton's was 3,500. And their interpretation was, you need to charge what administratively will cost you to do.
I think one of the things to note, and maybe lead to your question, that Bill talked about is that 30 to 45-day timeframe. And that's so that we submit them all at the same time, and so that the state then can determine who gets the license at the end of the day.
That's one way of looking at it, because then you're avoiding, and you could even do one group in 30 days, and if more keep coming in, another in 30 days. But it puts everyone on the same playing field, and it's not a first come, first served basis. Because if you do it that way, you will have someone at the steps of City Hall at 8 o'clock in the morning, when City Hall opens, to be the first one through the door. Councilman Avery?
I had a couple comments. When you talked about Sioux Falls and their five dispensaries, they all said they were going to charge $100,000. Curious, is that a reasonable fee? Is that going to?
I think you'll be reading about that in the paper, Wayne.
Yeah, I was going to recommend that we have unlimited and charge $100,000 a piece for them, and see how it goes.
I did ask that question very early on in the process, and the advice I was given is that according to state law, it has to be a reasonable fee. And right now, I think the state is charging $5,000, $6,000, so it'd be within proximity to that dollar amount.
The other thing that I was seeing though is, the way it looks in South Dakota, the law says that, it looks like any municipality would have to have, allow one dispensary. And then the county is interpreting that they can have one in the unincorporated areas. So theoretically, you could have hundreds of dispensaries, and, you know, like, you look at, I just looked at Minnesota, and they have medical cannabis, and it's pretty regulated that the doctor has to do it, just like you said. But they have 13 in the whole state of Minnesota. North Dakota has eight. You know, so to me, if we were really, and I think there's a real need to have the medical cannabis, and obviously, the voters of South Dakota thought so. And my concern is that that product be a good product, that so it has a chance of doing what it's supposed to do. And that we have people involved in that that know what they're doing and can give the good service. So I think if we, if those are our goals, is to take care of those people and to do it right, and then to have, be able to monitor it somehow, it's up to us to try to limit it. And if it says in the law that we can, we have to allow one dispensary, that'd be, in my opinion, is we should have one dispensary. Until we get a handle on things and know that there's a bigger demand for that, and we're not servicing those people that need it, then we allow another one. But to just come in and say we should have, open it up, and if they got in the right zoning, they should just have one. I just can't, I'm not comfortable with that. I just can't, I'm not comfortable with that. I don't think we have, I don't think we have, our obligation is to, the people with the needs for the medical and to take care of that. The entrepreneurs that see that as a business opportunity, I don't think that's our job to really look after them, so.
Any other comments, questions?
I do think that there is a counterpoint to that. And that is if we cap it and we say that one can be allowed and then we set an application fee that's super high, then essentially we're choosing one entity to profit from a new industry. And I think that the free market approach would be to allow more people to apply and come in. And then some of them will flame out, some of them won't get approval, some of them won't be good business people and they won't last very long. And then maybe we end up with a few that are stable. So that would be more my recommendation.
Councilmember Wendell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I guess I probably lean more on the side of not setting a limit or a number in our ordinances. I would prefer to see the market respond. And as this industry matures in the Brookings market and in the state of South Dakota, I think we'll have a good sense of how many dispensaries our community can support. And how many cultivation properties our community or county can support, rather than us identify, identify a set number. I do want to make sure that the language in 21-025 satisfy, still satisfies some of our goals around maybe achieving some limits based on zoning. Now, I was the counselor a couple of weeks ago that made the initial amendment to remove the buffer between number of, or set a limit in the number of dispensaries that could be located on any given block in the community. But then there was some language in the memo that made me think that maybe there's some staff concern that by removing that language, we've removed the meat of our zoning efforts. I took it to understand at that meeting in July, that the zoning language in 21-025, including the school buffers and the religious institutions and identifying specific districts, still did accomplish enough buffers throughout the community that we were controlling the number of dispensaries in that way. Even if we removed the language about distance between actual dispensaries. I just was maybe looking to staff to weigh in on whether or not you have concerns now that that language isn't in 025 anymore. Do the buffer zones that still exist in 025 accomplish some of what we were hoping to accomplish through zoning?
Yes, and at the same time, I think we've learned some things too through the discussions with Bill. The industrial area, for example, is one that I would recommend bringing back to council at this next hearing, especially for the growth operations. If I hear from council tonight, there is a desire to allow growth operations, then I'd recommend a thousand foot buffer from the industrial area. So you don't have them in the middle of your community. And then they would be located more on the west or the east parts of the community. And Mike, maybe you can show those industrial areas real quick on the map. You can see them, I guess maybe I can just call them out. At least mainly the brown areas are your industrial areas. But there is a small area in the center of our community. And so if you allow that thousand foot buffer, those won't be allowable. And therefore, you wouldn't have that pungent smell in your community. When it comes to the buffering between facilities, that's really up to the council. I was looking at the different thoughts of council and I saw kind of two camps. One camp interested in regulating the quantity, one not so much. I as staff would recommend if you're going to regulate the quantity, don't do it by a set number and have an application process. Because you're going to have winners and those that don't get it, you have to set criteria for determining that. And you're going to look to staff to come up with that criteria. And just having this discussion is very difficult to get a consensus. So I would recommend if there is consideration for quantities, to go to a buffering. And that buffer, I would recommend 1,500 feet to 2,000 feet between. What that would give you, Mike, if you just throw a dot, a place on that red area maybe? Yeah, yeah. So let's just say right there, so just go. Hello, technology. But what Mike will show you is that if you go 1,500 feet to 1,000 feet, basically what it does is it limits at least dispensaries to the quantity of four or five throughout the community. It allows business owners to make that decision where, you know, first come, first served and work through the free market to determine where they're going to be located. And I would further recommend that if this is something council's interested in, in a year, year and a half, revisit it. And if it's too restrictive, reduce it down even more. That way you have, allow no application process. Let's see, if Mike's getting it there, there you go. So I'd recommend 2,000 to 1,500 feet. And basically that would allow you a dispensary in pretty much every corner of the city in those business areas, one to two.
I think I understand the logic behind that. I just, I still may be landing this place where I'm not. And it seems to me that the current language in 21-025 includes the school buffers and the religious institutions that I think would be concerns. And if I've heard concerns from community members, they've been associated with those types of concerns. And we've identified specific districts that the dispensaries could exist in. To me, that seems to satisfy some of my concern. I do think, and it just maybe needs to be spoken out loud, I think there's a little stigma and some fear around medicinal marijuana. I do think as this industry matures in our market, that will dissipate. And I also think that stigma maybe is already dissipating. Not only did the state of South Dakota pass I-26, but Brookings County passed it by a huge.
Goodbye.
73, I'm going to pretend that wasn't like someone cutting me off. But 73% of Brookings County voters cast a ballot in favor of this. So I do think that the majority of folks in Brookings County, by a pretty wide margin, are supportive of this industry having a place in our community. And I'm not sure I'm supportive of attaching a number limit or attaching feet between dispensaries right now.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the distance between facilities is only to try to come to consensus amongst council to limit the quantity. I will also note that this is fairly new for staff and in all of us. I know we have liquor to look to, but that's been in place for 100 years. And so this is fairly new and that's why I would recommend if you are interested in buffering, coming back a year, year and a half later and reevaluating it. But at the same time, if council chooses to have none whatsoever, that's your prerogative as council.
Councilmember Tilton Burn?
I would echo some of the sentiments that have already been shared. I don't have a strong desire to limit whether that be by number or by buffer zone between dispensaries. I really appreciate the option of being able to look at, you know, should we do it by number? Should we do it by buffer? Should we not? And so I appreciate that work that's been done by the staff and the recommendations that we've seen. But given what I've learned through some of the research I've done, I just, at this point, am not compelled to place that limit. I would be in favor of, in terms of the other types of facilities, going with the recommendation that you've discussed tonight and removing that piece within the center part of the community and limiting that to the external areas by saying that there would be a buffer on those. I do feel that we should allow those types of institutions. Because I think if we are going to allow the dispensaries, I'd like to see the holistic picture of the entire business be able to happen in Brookings. And if we have entrepreneurs that want to start those kinds of businesses within Brookings, I'd like to be able to be a place where they're provided that whole picture, kind of from start to finish. And so I would like to be able to provide those options. But I definitely can see where having some of those, especially if there are odor concerns not right in the center of the community. And so I would be favorable to those buffers, but not necessarily to those between dispensaries.
Councilmember Collins?
One of my concerns is. Every corner, down Main Street, down, you know, every street. I don't want that to be the center point of Brookings. When you come in, you see all these dispensaries everywhere. I understand what everybody's saying and I agree with some and I disagree with some. So we'll have to argue that out, I guess. I don't like the grow plant, the grow places in town anywhere. I'd like to keep that smell outside of town. I think everybody pretty much agrees with that. That's pretty much where I stand on things, still thinking about it, I guess.
Councilmember Brink, you have another comment or question?
Yeah, I had a follow-up, just on the subject of setting limits based on buffering and locations. That might not factor in what landlords and property owners might do. And I've heard anecdotally that that's being built into leases, whether or not, you know, a property owner might choose to allow that type of business to be there or not. So there might be other limits coming in to where those things could go that are not set by the city. So I think that's something to consider in this equation too. My other question is just about licensing fees. And when are we going to have the conversation about what makes sense for a Brookings licensing fee?
Now would be a great opportunity to have that discussion if council's interested. One of the things that we are looking at is closer to that thousand, $2,000 fee.
The idea of the fee is to cover our costs?
Our administrative costs.
And there's a background check, there's what? Do we go through?
Well, administratively, we have to go. In order to check off on the fee.
So we're looking at employee hours that.
I did talk to Steve once again, prior to this meeting, very early on in the process, said once again, probably somewhere around that 5,000 or less. That would be brought back to you as part of the fee resolution. We update the fees, but it'll probably be before October when that occurs. So if you have some ideas, I'd gladly take them.
That's a good question, Leah, but I want a couple of questions asked with my own. Out of the discussion that we've had tonight, are there any things that you can bring to us from Colorado that careful what you wish for type things? Are, do you see a direction that we're going here that we may regret? There's, if you want to Google a town. Put no number on their dispensaries. And they have 28 licenses right now. And it's. City Hall large? Smaller, less than 10,000. And it's, and Carbondale, Colorado, didn't have it. But on the other side of the coin, the market will decide how many make it and how many don't. And a lot of, Carbondale, I think had up to 13 and I think they have three or four now. And they're a town of about 3,000 between Aspen and Glenwood Springs. Border towns tend to have higher numbers because a lot of the states around them don't have, most of them have medical, but most of them don't have recreational still, like Iowa and Minnesota. And in Colorado, Nebraska doesn't, and Wyoming doesn't, and New Mexico doesn't. So what you're finding in the border towns is you're getting more licenses out. But what that does is it does put extra work on staff, which is why you do need a good fee to handle all the applications and background checks and your staff time work. But, you know, and one thing I would add, Nick, on the buffer zones, why we did the 300 to 500 or even sometimes 1,000? Because what we didn't want was two dispensaries in the same strip mall. Because you have other businesses in that strip mall where it can deter from their business if people don't support dispensaries. It's just another angle to look at, but it's alive and well. And what we didn't want is one section of town being the marijuana hub. That's why we put in buffers. Councilmember Tilton?
Questions regarding the fee? The first question I would have. Into well-executed background checks and kind of some of this administrative work, I actually think $1,000 seems pretty low. And before we make the decision of what that fee should be, I would like to see maybe a little bit more information from staff about what the cost to the city will be, including staff hours and all of that, to execute the necessary steps. Because I do want to make sure that we can cover a well-vetted process. And I don't know that $1,000 would cover it. Maybe it will, maybe I will be surprised. But just a little more information about what exactly will go into that would be helpful.
Yeah, when I throw out $1,000, $2,000, it's very high level. We haven't done that analysis of staff hours, but that is something that we definitely have to do.
And then did I hear earlier that there is also a fee that the state will charge on top of what the city will charge? And do we know what that dollar amount will be?
Bill or Eric, do you remember? For some reason, I remember Steve's telling me 5,000, but it's more than that.
Five or six.
Thank you.
Nick?
Related to. It sounds like the mood of the council, and I would tend to agree, is maybe some fear around cultivation facilities in the community. But I was wondering if, Bill, you could give us some insight into testing and manufacturing facilities inside of city limits?
I think a testing facility is a great idea. I heard there's only three or four planned for South Dakota right now. And for medical, that will probably work. But if you have one in your own community, you'll get results quicker. And the manufacturing, and that's where I think, you know, you need to do your inspections and stuff, that they have proper ventilation and stuff. I've never had many problems with the manufacturing, where they're making the gummy bears and baking the brownies and that kind of stuff.
And I would comment, right now, growing, manufacturing, testing is only allowed in industrial, the way it was presented. We did have some discussion on manufacturing, should that be allowed in some of the business districts? Because it is sometimes like a bakery to an extent. And so that's something that should probably have further discussion on. And Bill, I don't know if you have any advice on that?
Well, in most of the dispensaries, their manufacturing are separate. They're not in the dispensaries themselves. So they do have to have it off-site somewhere. And a lot of times, it can be even in another city. Because they're constantly moving product back and forth between dispensaries. Councilmember Tilton Burn?
Am I understanding correctly then that the only types of kind of, aside from dispensaries, the only type of business where you've experienced extreme smell is the actual growth operations? And not necessarily those that are doing the gummies and things like that?
Right, that's the majority of smell. Depending on the ventilation systems and those things in the manufacturing, you could get some. But I think with your staff inspections of, it's like inspecting a kitchen in a restaurant. There are odor fence and those kind of things that take away that.
So I guess for staff, my question would be, would the recommendation be, in terms of that more centralized part in the city, to just have the growth operations outside of that? Or any of those types of operations outside of that?
You know, that's where we take direction from council. Hearing what Bill has to say, I don't think manufacturing really produces that much of an issue. So I would be open to allowing that inside the middle. But it gets a little confusing because now you're talking zoning and allowable uses. And you, you know, we would just have to, I'd have to look to Mike to determine whether or not that's something that we could convey legislatively. But it's something we'd need to have an internal discussion on, whether or not you allow manufacturing in business areas as well, where you would allow a restaurant, for example. If they're not going to produce that much of an odor or that much of an issue, why not allow them in those areas?
Through the zoning to control that, could we say that for growth operations, like those specifically would be the ones that require that additional buffer?
Yeah, I think you could, but I'd turn to Mike to validate that.
Yeah, so the discussion was more on the cultivation facilities. So what we had talked about earlier today was having like a thousand foot buffer from residential zoned properties. So you'd have to be in an I-1 district. So if you look on the map, the darker brown shaded areas, those are the I-1s. And if you wanted to locate a cultivation facility there, they had to be at least 1,000 feet from a residential zoned property.
And that's just for cultivation, not the manufacturing?
Just for cultivation. Now, the tricky part on the manufacturing is the way the state's definitions, which ours, for the most part, mirror the state's, other than the state wrote everything from a medical cannabis situation. We approached it from, it's both. We're trying to be proactive. These, you know, cannabis product manufacturing facility, we don't allow manufacturing facilities for the most part as permitted uses in our B-3 districts. They're certainly not allowed in the B-1, B-2, and to a certain extent, in the B-4. So if you want to expand it into that area, you know, we'd have to come up with some wordsmithing to change the names. Because we'd be making exception that this would be the one manufacturing type facility that we would allow in a commercially zoned area. And then we would exclude all the other type of light processing manufacturing facilities. So if that's a route you want to pursue, we're probably going to have to look at changing some names and wordsmithing some things.
Any other discussion, question? Any other discussion, question? I guess I made the comment two meetings ago about careful what you wish for. I'd love to start small, and then we don't have to take any away if we feel that we've made a mistake. I'm probably still in that same position myself. I understand free market. I'm in a competitive market myself, and survival of the fittest, I understand that. But we don't have a limit on pharmacies, which I had a comment thrown at me one time from a constituent. But we only have five or six pharmacies also in town. So I don't know as if we should leave it wide open. It is medical marijuana. I don't, I know there's comments both ways, saying that this sets precedence for recreational cannabis, once that, if it does come, once the legal process has taken care of it. But I just have a hard time with the idea that we have to have more than five or six of these medical marijuana places. I don't know how popular it's going to be to begin with. I personally won't probably use medical marijuana myself, but I know others feel that it's necessary or it works for them, which is good. So I guess I, and then the other thing is too, is from what I understand, individuals that do get a medical marijuana card can grow their own, and up to three plants in different age levels as far as the age of the plant. So I sometimes wonder how much medical marijuana will be sold through a retail facility. Bill, can you help us on that at all? A lot of it's going to depend. Cost of marijuana in South Dakota. The black market is still going to exist, because South Dakota is 21 and over. You still have a large population under 21. In Colorado right now, the marijuana is fairly inexpensive right now, and it's getting purchased up by a lot of folks from a lot of other states because of the competition. They've had to lower their prices. So to answer your question, I think it's going to be, you know, competition is somewhat good for your number of dispensaries, whether that's two or whether that's 10. The problem with one is that you have no competition. They can set their prices. I think that's why Yankton settled on two. So there is some competition.
Well, just in the discussion that we've had, the most welcoming community in the South Dakota for medical cannabis, I guess, or in the region, you know, they just, you know, the medical community is very cool on the idea, if their doctors are prescribed this for a treatment, the university is not going to allow it on campus. So it's not like, you know, the whole world has embraced it, and we'd be the only ones that were trying to place limits. So it's just, you know, it's, I think there was some confusion yet on what we're even talking about at times. And we want to, we want to equate medical marijuana with a pharmaceutical application. If we have pharmacies, we could have this. Marijuana didn't become medicine overnight. It's a treatment that could be useful, and a doctor can recommend it, but it's, we've given it more credit maybe than it deserves in some ways. And I still think that, you know, one maybe isn't the answer, but I think we're, we've got some support that unlimited isn't the answer either, that to have a quality service, you can't let everybody into it and have, you know, 20 dispensaries in Brookings. And I think we'd look a little foolish if we did that. I mean, every, if Minnesota, state of Minnesota, can have 13 in the whole state, and we have 13 in Brookings, I just consider that really odd. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't see that as the way to go, but I might be out of touch, I guess.
Councilmember Collins.
The zoning, the quality and the. Tonight, are we studying that tonight, or what are we doing?
No, we're not doing any action. Discovery and information and throwing out comments. I guess this might be a good time to say also, the public should chime in, give us an idea of what direction the community thinks that we should be in. We'll look at that also. So I look forward to emails, comments, questions. If you don't get any. Every time I go to Hy-Vee, I'll find somebody unknown, just ask them what they think. Paul, you got anything?
Yeah, so I would just follow up and recap everything. The next week meeting, we have the public hearing set. And if council is undecided then, we have up to two other public hearings. And I would ask that council work towards coming up at least with a majority vote on something, because we need something in place by October 1. We could always go back and adjust it based on council's discussions, but we do need something by October 1, and we're going to have to have two hearings. So with that said, ordinance 21-25, and I just want to recap this, is regarding the zoning. So right now, as written, it'll come before you next week, it'll allow dispensaries in B1 through B4 business districts, what's going to state law prohibits 1,000 feet. The current ordinance does have that 300-foot buffer taken out. So if council members want to restrict the quantity, I would recommend adding into that through an amendment. 1,500, if you want five within the community, make it 20,000 feet if you only want two or three in the community. It's entirely up to you. Testing and manufacturing within the zoning and cultivation is now in I-1. We will make that adjustment and bring that forward next week, that you allow, that you have 1,000 foot for many residential, so you don't have at least, I'm sorry, cultivation within the heart of the community. Manufacturing will still be allowed throughout the entire community. And in the future, if council wants to look at manufacturing and other zonings, that's something we can bring back at a later discussion. Excuse me. Ordinance 21-27 sets the number of dispensaries, manufacturing, testing, cultivation facilities. Once again, staff, as staff, as the manager, I would recommend not going down that path. But as council, if that's a path you want to go down, you can sure set it. You are required to have at least one dispensary according to IM-26. However, you don't have to have any of the other three options, according to state law. Ordinance 21-28 sets the licensing, and so based on what I'm hearing today, it sounds like council is in favor of allowing at least some manufacturing, testing, and cultivation facilities, as well as dispensaries. So that's an adjustment we can make as well. And so those are the three ordinance that'll be before you next week. And let me know if there's any clarification I need to make.
Councilmember Tilton-Burne.
Just to clarify what you're saying there, will they come before us next time, already adjusted for the buffer for the cultivation facilities and for allowing all types of businesses?
Correct, that's our intention. I'll have to visit with Steve when he gets back Thursday, unless Eric wants to give an opinion, whether or not we'd have to have a second hearing, first meeting in September on that. You want me, I'll visit with Steve, and I can let council know that next week.
And if we make any adjustments beyond that next week, I assume we'll have to go to an additional reading.
It just depends if it's a major or minor adjustment.
Thank you.
Let's talk about, well, Paul was going to introduce someone, but I think he left.
That's right. At the next meeting, we'll introduce Mike Logan, the new general manager for Swiftel.
What is it, Bonnie? What?
August 24th.
We're, first readings on property tax levy, budget amendment number four, and conditional use permit for mixed business, residential use and Folsom addition. Of course, we'll talk about the three cannabis ordinances that we've discussed tonight. Public hearing on temporary alcohol for an event in Pioneer Park. And then second reading will be on video lottery requests for Corner Pantry number 19, which is the former depot. Other business, renaming the Red Rink at the Larson Ice Arena, looking at preliminary plat for reserve fourth edition, revise preliminary plat for Arbor Hill edition. Where's Arbor Hill at, Paul? South of 20th, okay, yeah, yeah, closer to 22nd Avenue, correct?
322.
And 17. Right, okay. So it helps me a little bit. Amending the 2040 comprehensive future plan use map that we might take a look at. Progress report from assistant city manager. And then I guess I would entertain any forthcoming comments or topics for future discussion by any of the council members? That being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.